Welcome to my commentary on the Exeter Township Supervisors Meeting, held on June 8th, 2020. You know, it's a... These are difficult times with all the things that are going on in the country. Covid-19, riots, vandalism. And it's unfortunately... It's unfortunate for us that we must contend with a Board of Supervisors that simply cannot be trusted. They fight with the few activists in the community that ask the questions and attack us. But worse of all, I think, are the lies that they tell us. But I've got my comments, my observations, my opinion on some of the things that went on on June 8th. And first, I want to start out with the public comment section for agenda items. And there's a couple of us who have watched this every two weeks. And one of them is Mr. Riley. Mr. Riley discussed the promenade and the issues related to the promenade, the costs, the lack of space, no plans. As we've talked about earlier, how confused the board seems to be and continues to be, nothing has changed. But he brings up some very good issues during the public comment section of the agenda items. In addition, one of the supervisors, Ms. Kircher, she replied to his comments and she was in agreement with, if not all, almost most all of the comments that Mr. Riley had made. But then what happens is we see Mr. John Casadis, another supervisor, who interjects, interrupting Ms. Kircher. They don't really follow Robert's rules and orders. They like to tell us they do, but they don't. So he interrupts Ms. Kircher, as he has in the past meetings. And you'll watch those videos, you'll see in most of the meetings for 2020, he rudely interrupts her, claims that she's not correct. So he interrupts her in this meeting, claiming that she's wrong, but offers absolutely no proof. And so in one moment, this 43-year-old glorified warehouse worker questions without any facts Ms. Kircher. And for those of you who don't know, Ms. Kircher, this is her third six-year term. Not consecutively, but she's also served two previous six-year terms for the township. She has more experience as a supervisor than all the other five supervisors combined. And she also worked in the county as Executive Secretary for Mike Scott for quite a few years. So this little... This boy, I call him a boy, questions Ms. Kircher, calls her, tells her, calls her out, tells her she is wrong. And this is someone who has almost 20 years on Mr. Casadis and has a vast, much more vast experience. But he doesn't stop there, you know? He also calls out Mr. Riley, you know? Mr. Riley is a retired accounting professor at Albright College. Mr. Riley is also a CPA. And when he was talking about the promenade, and you'll hear other issues later on, Mr. Casadis claims he's wrong. There are falsehoods. And he's right, and all these other people are wrong, even though they have vastly more experience than he does. So you have to wonder how someone like Mr. Casadis can sit there and claim, without any proof whatsoever, that they're wrong and he is right. This is a man who manipulates other people. He... His whole goal is a status to drive his huge ego. He has a lack of remorse, low empathy for other people. He has a sense of entitlement versus public service. In fact, he has all of the traits of what we refer to as the Dark Triad characteristics. I don't know how many of you have heard of the term "the Dark Triad", but it's quite simple, really. It refers to Machiavellian narcissism and psychopathy characters, characteristics and the character itself. So, for example, a Machiavellian personality is manipulative. It's got a manipulative personality, but unlike the psychopathy, he can control this impulsive behavior until it's beneficial to him. And he has no remorse. Narcissism is simply ego fulfillment and self-enhancement. And then psychopathy shares traits of both of those, the Machiavellian and the narcissist. And but the psychopathy, again, has little empathy for others and has a lack, here's an important, a lack of a sense of morality. So this is a dangerous person. And in my opinion, this is what Mr. Casadis is. And I would like you, if you really care about this community, to focus on this guy, watch the things that he does. We have many video clips of this behavior. This isn't just a suggestion that this might be the case. We have video proof of this type of behavior. And in some cases, some of you out there who watch my videos, you've personally experienced his behavior towards you. I have a list of over a dozen people that he's tried to intimidate, insult publicly, and humiliate publicly. Yours truly included. So I guess let's move on to the next public comment. That's John Carmelo, and he starts talking about disbursements. He's concerned about some of the payments. He talks about the architect. And he also talks about the township manager that they're going to hire at this meeting and the concern about insisting on residency. Our ordinance requires the township manager to live in the township. He doesn't have to originally be from the township, he just has to live here. Well, they waived that again. The only other time it was ever waived was when they hired John Granger. And we all know how that turned out. And then the last comment, public comment, and they always save me for last, is about the architect, KCBA, and KCBA's prior work. I made a comment that, hey, listen, we've had KCBA look at this seven acres that the current buildings are on. You want to give them another chance to look at those seven buildings? Why not use another architect to get a different perspective? Well, of course, that just went over their heads. They don't want to hear anything about it because KCBA will. And so they did an RFP in the last meeting to ask KCBA to come back and give them another lower rate or tell them what they would do. You know, remember, if you read my, watched my commentary on the last meeting, they were hoping KCBA could tell them where they're at and what decisions, tell them what decisions they need to make. Because they can't think on their own, folks, you know? They try to act as one brain, but it's totally disjointed, okay? But some of the comments in this video, you hear Mr. Spees say that there wasn't any drawings or that he remembers, it was just a brainstorming session. Well, he wasn't even on the board at that time. So he's remembering things that he couldn't possibly remember. I don't know where he got that idea. Casadis was on the board. And you hear him say, well, I only saw one thing, and that was drawings on the fire station. But there were maybe 10 to 12 or more drawings of different scenarios on how we could utilize the current area for our needs. The only thing missing was a narrative on all these different scenarios, which I believe there is one, they just didn't give it to me. But we'll work on that. So Casadis said he only saw this one drawing, but there were many drawings. And then Ham claimed that, in this video, that he wasn't aware of any of this stuff. Although if you go back to previous videos, he talks about looking at the drawings and make comments that it seemed like it was too too busy and not enough room there. So but in this, in this one, he doesn't remember seeing anything. And we move on to unfinished business number three, the architect. And you'll see as they talk about unfinished business number three, the architect, Casadis continues his rude and obnoxious behavior. I want you to notice this because it's very obvious in this, in this video. And you'll remember, Casadis and Spees attempted in the last meeting to hire KCBA. But it looks like at best, in this meeting, they failed. They haven't chosen a architect to do anything yet because they're still not sure. And they finally made a suggestion which makes sense, and that is wait until they hire the manager and the managers on board to help them arrive at decisions. So but again, Casadis is in full action, displaying the Dark Triad characteristics. And you know, it's interesting when you think, listen to what Mr. Casadis says because he talks about how we've got to move forward on the fire station. We've, Mr. Mascaro donated a million dollars for this. Well, the fire station, I think, is going to cost $7 to $9 million, depending on what the final architectural plans are and where we build it. But Mr. Mascaro has not given us a million dollars, okay? This is an out-and-out lie. And this is how Mr. Casadis twists the truth to his benefit. Mr. Mascaro has pledged a million dollars towards the building of the fire station. We haven't received a million dollars yet. So and that pledge is over five years. So we're not going to get the full million dollars until the five years are up. So my contention is, well, we have five years to plan to find the location, to raise additional funds, and to get the architectural drawings. So they want to spend the money before we get it. Typical, isn't it? Then under unfinished business is the Township Solicitor. Now, we really need a new township solicitor, I mean desperately. Fox and Rothschild should have been let go at the end of January. They have caused untold damages to this township. They have charged us millions and millions of dollars in legal fees. I don't know how many cases they represented us in, but I can tell you that they've lost every single major lawsuit we were in. For example, the lawsuit that should never have happened over the liquor license with the Redding Country Club. And Mr. Casadis was instrumental in having this happen. He pushed it, he seconded the motion to kick Viva out, a company that was already failing and would have died on its own. But Fox and Rothschild, I think, made a million or more dollars in legal fees on us. And with the settlement and the other revenue losses, Mr. Casadis has cost this township over $4 million. And we're still losing money as long as the food and beverage and banquet business isn't operating. So Fox and Rothschild revels in this. They are having a huge, huge payday every year. And if you look back at our legal expenses prior to the arrival of Fox and Rothschild, you would, you would see that they're miniscule compared to what Fox and Rothschild is taking out of our pockets. And I have to think, in my opinion, that it's all planned. It's all planned. If I went into some of the detail, you would be astonished. And we'll get to that eventually. But our wise and ever-knowing temporary manager Clarence Ham says that we should, we should stay with Fox and Rothschild to the end of the year because all the hard stuff is over. Now, I don't know how you could predict that there's not going to be more hard stuff coming up in the future. As far as I know, no one can predict that. In fact, historically, if you look at Fox and Rothschild's record, they're always digging something up to charge us enormous amounts of legal fees. Just on my, my request for information, my right-to-know request, from December 1st to March 31st, they charged the township over $30,000 to redact the information that later had to be appealed and unredacted, ordered by the Office of Open Records. So their, their record of never losing an appeal is no longer standing. But the real point is, is that they have to go. In fact, we've been abused so badly by Fox and Rothschild. And my opinion is, is that they've sent these lawyers here to learn about municipal law on our dime. And maybe that's what's costing so much. They've got to do all kinds of research because they have no experience. We need to hire an experienced municipal lawyer and get rid of the money-sucking Fox Rothschild organization. In fact, they should be investigated by the state. Now, under new business. Well, great news. We'll see if it's great news. They've, they've hired a new manager that was approved at this June 8th meeting, and they're going to pay him $120,000 a year. I can't argue the amount. It's considering knowing the supervisors, knowing the situation that this township is in. If Jeff Bartlett, that's his name, if Mr. Bartlett does a good job and does what he should do, he's going to earn every penny of that $120,000. And Jeff, Mr. Bartlett, if you, if you watch this video, I want to tell you that I will support you 100% as long as you follow the righteous path of doing what's right for the residents of this township. And I can assure you, in time, you will figure out that there are some bad actors on the Board of Supervisors. And they have secret agendas, which you'll find out, no doubt. So the other issue with Mr. Bartlett was about living in the township. My, my opinion on this is very simple. I think we should, we should have approached it this way, and that is give him one year to move into the township. That way, if he doesn't like us, he could just resign. If he does like us, well, I'm going to hope that he would love to live among us. And if he does a great job, he could probably be here for the rest of his career. I think Jeff is 60 years old. So if he could give us six, seven more years, he'll probably be retiring. But we could always cross that bridge in a year and see what happens. But they've waived the ordinance, he's going to be allowed to live wherever he wants. And that's pretty much the end of that. But something else happened after they approved Mr. Bartlett as our new manager. And that is, Mr. Spees was starting to talk about it. And the comments that he made were quite, quite strange. I mean, and you could, you could decide for yourself what's going on. But he started talking really weird. And we know recently that he's been telling us that, that he's been very forgetful, you know? And he's claimed several times that he doesn't remember saying certain things. And although it was in the newspaper or in videos, we have it. My first experience, when I thought it was very odd, was in 2019, when he was just the supervisor, not the chairman. I brought to the, the board meeting and talked about the fact that in 2018, the Police Pension Fund lost a million dollars. Yeah, they did. But Mr. Spees claimed that's not true, you know? And it didn't, we didn't lose a million dollars. That's when I started becoming concerned about Mr. Spees's memory because he's on, he was, I guess he still is, on the Police Pension Board. And you can't, how can you argue with the auditor's audited financial report on the Police Pension Fund? It's audited, it's been accepted. And the auditor says, his report shows that the Police Pension Fund lost a million dollars. So I don't know how you can dispute that, but Mr. Spees did in 2019. We have a video of it too, if he wants to disagree with me. It's very obvious, Dave. Also, as he became chairman of the board, there's been instances where a motion wasn't seconded and it died, but they didn't recognize it. But there were other instances where motions were seconded, but not voted on. And we have the video on that as well. And then there's a recent meeting, I think the last meeting, where Mr. Spees got lost again and asked, did we vote on that motion? So this is a guy whose only requirement as chairman of the board is to manage the meeting and the meeting flow and so forth. So why am I talking about this? Because it's what Mr. Spees said after the vote to accept Mr. Bartlett as our manager. And he started discussing about how they were looking in Southeast Asia for a manager. And Jeff Bartlett is, you know, coming, coming to us from Southeast Asia. And you can hear in the video, supervisors start laughing hysterically. And Mr. Spees asked them, what did I say? He had no recollection of what he said. And Mr. Staub explained to him, hey, Dave, you were talking about looking for candidates from Southeast Asia, and that's where we found Jeff. And Spees then says, oh, well, maybe because I worked for 12 years in Southeast Asia. But here's another problem. He didn't work in Southeast Asia, he worked 12 years in China. And China is in East Asia. And Dave, I know this for a fact because I've been to China many times, okay? And there's just too many mistakes in what you're saying here. I think we should be concerned. I mean, folks out there, you can, you can arrive at your own decision, but I suggest that the, the other board members sit down and talk to Dave and make sure he's okay. Now, the other, we'll move on from that. I thought, you know, you watch it, you'll see exactly what I talked about. Then the department reports and the supervisor reports came up. Not, there's never too much there, although recently they've been trying to conduct business during the supervisor's reports and the department reports. And they've, they've gotten away with it so far. But you know, we have a chief of police and he's telling us that we need to buy riot gear. Well, I don't know about you folks, but I was born and raised here, in this area, and I, I can't recall us ever having a riot in Exeter or Birdsboro or even Mount Penn or Reifton. So why do we need to buy riot gear? It just really goes over the top of my head on that one. And then they were talking about the national situation and the way things are going. Mr. Casadis suggests that all of our employees at the township should take sensitivity training. I could almost, I'm almost having trouble containing my laughter on that one. Okay? So I saved the, the public comment non-agenda items for last. And they're very interesting. Mr. Riley again confronted, actually at the non-agenda public comments, he confronts Mr. Casadis, who claimed that the analysis of Mr. Riley's Pennsylvania American Water Company proposed rates increases are, in Mr. Casadis's words, falsehoods. This happened in a previous meeting, and apparently Mr. Riley and Mr. Casadis were going back and forth emails discussing it because Mr. Riley seriously wanted to know from Mr. Casadis where the falsehoods are. Well, Mr. Casadis could never provide that information. And this is more support for what I tell you is a problem with this community. He will attack, he will intimidate, he will do everything he can, embarrass you in public. If you oppose what he says, if you disagree with him or he disagrees with you, he will tell you, those are falsehoods, are there lies? He's, he's called me a liar, we have the video. And with Michelle, his colleague, he tells her that she's just wrong. So only the kid is right. And you know, again, Mr. Riley is the CPA, retired accounting professor from Albright. And this is, Mr. Casadis telling the certified public accountant that his analysis of the rate increases by Pennsylvania American Water Company are falsehoods. So he has a little, Casadis has a little diatribe there, but the bottom line is, you know, it just fits in with, with the characteristics. And there's no reason during public comment that this guy should be attacking the citizen that's making the comment. And I think it's, it's all about intimidation with the public as well. Because some of you who see this might be afraid to stand up and make a comment because of the way they treat us. Don't be afraid of them, you know? Their courage is behind that desk. And when they come out from behind that desk, they're, they're even more passive than pussycats in most cases. So and then Mr. Riley's wife, Dorothy, she hits on a couple of issues during the public comment non-agenda items. And she wanted to know if they treat all the public the way they treat Mr. Mascaro, who in a previous meeting had asked for a waiver of some zoning issues with his recycling plant. And I mean, they just, you know, without any further ado, boom, he, those were waived. He could do what he wanted. There were some issues that needed to be fixed, but they're not even requiring, as far as the conversation went, they're not even requiring him to prove that he made the proper corrections. So he gets away with that. And Dorothy Riley wanted to know if they're going to be treating everybody else that way and giving everybody else a huge leeway in, in the zoning laws. It's a good question, Dorothy, and we never did get an answer to that, did we? Then her other issue, she wanted to know if, you know, why the board ignored Ms. Kircher's motion on the floor earlier at the meeting. Where Ms. Kircher made a motion, it was seconded, and before they could vote on it, Mr. Casadis made another motion. Now, this guy, Casadis, is the oldest member of the board, this recent board. And he doesn't know that you can't make a motion while another motion is pending on the floor, but he tried to do it. But Dorothy Riley wanted to know why they ignored her motion at first. And Dorothy claims that, she believes that these four men are misogynists. And that's a good point also, Dorothy. They, they didn't know how to respond to that claim. They didn't know how to respond to that claim either. And so, we have to see what else, let's see. Another thing she asked is, she wanted to know why Clarence, all of a sudden, is saying, Clarence Hamm, who's our temporary manager, who all of a sudden is saying that everything is rundown. What have they been doing for the past six or seven years? Why is everything rundown? And in my mind, I had the thought, gee, I'd like to see their maintenance schedule, because I don't really see or hear any talk about routine maintenance. And I have a feeling that it doesn't happen. These guys come to work, they put in their eight hours, go home and take the salary, and that's it. So, we also want to know, you know, in conjunction with that, Mrs. Riley, Dorothy Riley was saying, well, what was wrong with the wastewater treatment plant? You know, you falsely represented that that was rundown when it was winning awards before Vanderland and Granger got here, okay? And she alludes to the fact that we know that they, they actually, this is one of the big, big misrepresentations, the false narrative that this group of supervisors has presented to the public. It's simply not true. We're getting lied to all the time, and that's why this promenade issue is a big one. If we don't stop them, they're going to spend all of our money that we got from the plant, the sewer plant, which they claim forty million is left. And they're going to spend that plus more. Because you heard in the last meeting, Mr. Staub voted against proceeding with the promenade because his reasoning was, we haven't got the financing lined up yet. So, we're going to borrow more money. And when you borrow money, you've got to pay the bond, and that means raising taxes or spending your reserve. So, then John Carmelo, he was talking, he had three topics. He also talked about the Running Country Club, it's just sitting there idle. They should be working on getting that restaurant up, they're dragging their feet. They'll tell you that they are, but, you know, I've been around long enough to know when somebody's dragging their feet, and I think most of you have been around long enough too. It's been closed for years now. They should have been working on the plan and had been ready to open it up as soon as possible, but nothing. And finally, he also asked about the Pennsylvania American Water Company rates. You know, it's a tragedy what this board did to us because if you go through the videos and you go through the minute meetings, they never tell you that when they sell the plant, that American Water is going to be charging us more because they need to make their at least minimal 6% profit, 6% return on their investment. And they make it sound like we're going to enter into this huge group of water sewer plants that American Water owns, so that our expenses will be shared with all those others out there. But they never explain to you that it goes the other way. There's only one of us that goes into the pool. Now, there's going to be fifty of them that we're going to be sharing their expenses for. So, they lied to us, basically. It was that false narrative, how everything's going to be great, right? What it turns out to be is that they're just lazy. They didn't want to manage the plant. And we spent millions of dollars paying EEMA to manage the plant who knew absolutely nothing about managing a plant. And if you doubt that, or maybe Mr. Crusaders and his colleagues will dispute it, we have, we have emails where the people working down there for EEMA say specifically they don't have the expertise to run the plant. We could have just kept our employees in place if they were really serious about selling the plant because it needed to be sold and sell it to Pennsylvania American Water Company without bringing EEMA in there. But EEMA was an associate of John Granger. So, in a short period of time, we paid these people millions of dollars. Wake up, folks. They're taking us to the cleaners, and it's not a dry cleaner. So, last but not least, I get my non-agenda item in. And what I wanted to talk about was the fact that they deferred the rental rent, the rent from Monroe, the muffler place up there. And what most of you don't know is Monroe is a corporate-owned store. Monroe is traded on the stock exchange, M-N-R-O. Their last fiscal year, which ended March 31st, 2020, this year, they had record revenues of 1.3 billion dollars. And our board has decided to give them a pass. Well, first, they gave them one month for free because the residents and taxpayers of Exeter Township are extremely generous. We don't have any problems here, so we can subsidize a 1.3 billion dollar revenue company, right? So, we gave them a month's free rent, and then now we're deferring the rest of the rent. It wasn't really clear. Monroe was saying, we're not going to pay you till next year. The supervisor said, well, we can, you know, defer them for three months. But it wasn't clear how they were going to handle them. And so, I mentioned this, you know, that we're underwriting it. And Mr. Crusaders's response was, well, we wanted to be consistent with everyone. We wanted to treat everyone the same. Well, you know what? They're not all the same. The other businesses up, there's seven businesses up there. The other six businesses are small, local entrepreneurs. They're not massive, national companies earning 1.3 billion dollars. And this is a significant difference in Monroe and the rest of the businesses. And it's beyond my scope of understanding in my many years of experience why you would try to treat the small business person like the big business. It needed to be looked at differently. But our supervisors are lazy and often misinformed. They don't do their work, they don't do their research. They don't go beyond the surface of an issue. And this should scare you all. You should really be concerned about this because this is why so many bad mistakes are being made. You know, there should have been a differentiation between the big 1.3 billion dollar companies and our little local entrepreneurs who are simply trying to survive. So, but Mr. Crusaders says, we treat everybody the same. And the facts are that they don't treat everybody the same. Mr. Mascaro gets an easy pass on zoning regulations. Somebody else gets another pass. In fact, look at Lisa Vanderland, who was the chairman of the board of our supervisors for many years. She never had to pay a per capita tax. So, Mr. Crusaders, don't sit there and tell me that you treat everybody the same. It's simply not true. In fact, it's very unfair. And this goes back to the dark triad issues that you have. So, you know, I think it really, part of it comes down to, they're just lazy. And they just like their position and like to have the power, you know, to have more power than the average citizen. So, these are my opinions. You may not agree with me, but I urge you to form your own opinion. Look at the video, come to your own conclusions, and I urge you to get involved. The reason why we're getting these responses from the township supervisors is because they are not used to being observed by the public. Public oversight at this level of government is extremely important. These guys are elected for six years. They have great responsibility. They can buy and sell anything, they can create any ordinance they want in this township, and there's nothing we can do about it. They have power, they have responsibility, but there's one major thing lacking, and that is they have no accountability. Things are bad in this township. You can't imagine how bad it is, and I urge you to get involved, ask questions, demand answers. Observe the way they behave, very important. Observe the way they treat the few citizens that actually go up there and ask questions and confront them. And you will see the adversarial role that they take. It's obvious. You can't avoid noticing it. So, with that in mind, I hope you'll watch the video and keep involved, get involved with our community. You owe it to your neighbor, and you owe it to yourself. Thank you.